I think he should start it up.
The red light should be on and it should say that you're being recorded.
Okay, this meeting is being taped for cable television, so your voices and your faces will be recorded to the one person in your audience. Okay, so why don't we start with number three, which is approval of the 1870 Town Hall expenses.
I'll do the $4.99.
Which you're gonna hear somewhere after the... Ah, here we go. For $4.99.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think we need two signatures on that. Okay, the next we can do is the approval of the membership and the charge of the Insurance Advisory Committee, which has already had a meeting. So we want to appoint to the committee David Goulding, who's the Police Union Representative, Patty Romer, who's the Teachers Union Representative, Melinda Rollins, Eloise Sauls, who are general government employees, and Dennis Bartlett is the retiree representative.
So, so move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
You get to sign a lot of things now.
Okay.
Now the charge.
And we can also approve the charge of the committee, which is that the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a committee to be known as the Insurance Advisory Committee herein after referred to as the committee pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 3. The committee shall be composed of eight members as follows: seven people to be duly elected or appointed on the committee by organizations of employee groups of the town of... oops, that should say Berlin, not Dennis. Berlin, and one member who shall be a retiree of the town of Berlin. So their charge was that they are going to write a report giving us their recommendations for the insurances, and I asked them to have that report ready by April 25th this year. And the Board of Selectmen will read the report, and if we do not, well, we'll read the report, and it, within 30 days, well, someone may ask us why we did not do what they did, and then we have to tell them why we chose to do something other than what they did. So we did item three and four.
Okay.
So then we'll go back to item one, which is the gas.
Is that that gas that's being derived through fracking in Western New York, isn't that quite controversial?
It is.
I was gonna call CLF today, and I didn't...
Who's CLF?
Conservation Law Foundation, they would, you know, have an opinion on that either.
I've got a printout from... There's no organization out there, no fracking gas in Massachusetts, which is out in the western, but there was, oh, the Massachusetts Land Trust Council sent a letter to the governor on that. So we'll go back to the gas, which is item one. So we have a request from Tennessee Gas to go on town land for parcels which are located there.
Well, it's the Mount Pisgah Ball Hill one, and then the Ross, the Clark piece, which is off Coben Road, just as you start at Coben Road into the left, that whole area, and then further up onto the Foddy Caves area. And one of those is two separate pieces, that's why it says four, so that's right through that area. And I'm trying to, I'm trying today to look at, the map's not clear, but to be able to put a line down through there so people know where it is when they come in to find out.
So apparently, they came into the assessor's office and got all of their map information without telling the assessors what they were doing. So we're not sure where they're looking, but we know that Baker Road, which Marcia's here, Frank Brewer's house, right?
Next to Frank.
Next to Frank.
It's actually gonna run behind our properties.
So there's a lot of concern about this, that they won't tell us what the route is. Correct, Mary?
Not yet. They told Diane that they, they don't have a plan, and when they do have a plan, that they will share it. And you've asked for a couple of weeks now?
Yeah. And then I sent the response today, and he said, "All I have is a, is a hand-drawn line across Berlin with the GIS, using the GIS map." And I, and I wrote back and said, "That's all I want?" No, he won't give it.
The, I did ask Harold Naughton's aide at the transfer station, she was gathering signatures for him, I don't, I think I might have told you this, no, it was on Saturday, they were trying to get him to pull together the, he, he had Bolton, Berlin, which affects him, and then get other legislators, just hold an open meeting, have these people lay it out and tell the people what's going on. But in addition to the actual corridor that they're looking for, I am personally, I'm interested in this whole fracking situation, and I don't wanna go against environmental groups that are concerned about the big picture in Western New York, so we should look into the whole thing.
Well, there are many towns out in the western part of the state which would have the three-foot pipe.
Yep.
Have statewide petition all about not expanding it and not taking fracking gas, which is what it would be.
I think that's the...
Wow, where'd you get this?
There's a whole website.
Is there actually a pipeline in, or is it all just proposals across the whole thing?
Pardon me?
I think, well, I think one, I know, my question is, is there actually gas lines anywhere, you know, from this proposal, or is it all just proposals and they're just working on doing all the surveys, you know, the big line coming?
That's all new, I believe.
But there is actually a line already there? See, I'm, I read this up, it's not clear as to whether there's actually...
There is a line, there is a Pittsburgh lateral in Bolton, but I think that's probably 30, 40 years old. Because I read an article about the Boy Scout camp in Stowe, or some camp in Stowe in 1960, when the line came through, they had cleared out this spot, and then they could park the cars on top of it. So that was years ago. But the big line going all the way across is brand new. So my, what I would suggest is that we not give them permission.
I would second that.
Do you have any?
And this is permission to cross our town conservation lands.
To go on the land and to do testing on it?
Survey.
Survey it?
No, I, I think at this point with what we know, that's very appropriate. I wouldn't even know what I was giving permission to do at this point, and I'm not in the habit of giving permission when I don't understand what it is.
You are giving them permission to enter on your land for purposes of performing civil...
No, no, I, I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the whole thing is about, so.
Frank Brewer, who was approached and has talked to an agent already, gave me the package that they gave, that they're giving out to the people that they're talking to already.
I think we have that part, yeah. Yeah, okay, well then, I made a motion, I heard a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there something here that says we don't, or is this just...
That's the form that would say you are giving approval, and I'll inform them that you're not.
I would just put together a letter that said that on this day, that the Board of Selectmen voted not to give permission for the access requested.
Selectmen Boomin visited today and made a suggestion about the special town meeting warrant, which was today at 1:00.
This.
And that's, there's a proposed article.
Did that close at 1:00?
1:00 p.m.
Oh, okay, I thought it closed at 8:00 tonight.
Well, so I was gonna let you wordsmith these, these are just two whereas kind of articles, resolutions?
Why didn't we close it at 1:00 instead of in the middle of a meeting?
With the hope that I'd be able to print it and have you sign it tonight, although I can print it and have you sign it.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I had something that was asked for, and I just presumed we were closing it at 8:00, the way we normally do, I'm sorry. That's my...
I'm not sure if you have control over just changing that or not, I don't know.
Well, I think it's usually closed early so that she can get it ready, and then we sign it, and...
Yeah, I didn't come up with one myself, Peggy suggested it.
Okay.
That's because we missed Monday and got moved to Thursday.
So this was just a resolution to ban high-pressure pipelines and champion sustainable energy, and to whine a little bit about them, you know, having inherent, about the inherent rights of the residents of Berlin to govern their own community.
That, that was from Covington?
One was from Covington and one was from this website.
I put Covington's in your draft special town meeting warrant as article number four, if you want it.
I don't know if you guys wanna write, read, have me read a resolution for this at town, at the special town meeting? I mean...
If we just voted, I mean, it's to memorialize us to oppose it, basically the...
Yes, yes, yes.
Right, and we've just done that.
Okay.
Who, who brought it in, we don't wanna offend, did Marcia bring it in?
I brought it in, yeah.
Well, we can use it...
Yeah, you can offend me.
Whatever you want, we won't, if you wanna put it on, I mean, that's good, you've got all this stuff.
Doesn't a really, doesn't a special town meeting article, though, then not only say that the three selectmen vote not to, but the town?
The town will vote and say that they don't want it too.
Sure, give them a chance to vote.
Yeah, okay.
What do you think, Tom?
The one concern that I have is we scheduled a special town meeting for half an hour before the annual town meeting, and typically, by custom, we, you know, do stuff that could be done without a lot of discussion, and, raha, if this were on the annual town meeting, or it was a night, I think I'd feel differently about it.
It's okay. I figured we only had three things on the warrant.
I mean, I, I'm not necessarily close to it, but I'm saying that was, you know, one of my thoughts was, you know, normally, we don't throw something that's gonna then, you know, keep us talking about things into the annual town meeting. We can always hold a special town meeting if we feel this thing is getting imminent, we wanna do a demonstration, you know, we'd want a demonstration of...
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
Well, just, if we all just tried to ask Naughton to hold it instead of suggesting, I suggested that he do it, we should, did you, were we gonna write a letter to him asking him to do it?
Just wanna guess if the board would then...
Okay, fine.
And, and Jennifer Flanagan, too. Plus, you know some DEP people, right?
Yeah, so we hold a public, have them hold a public meeting, informational meeting, so we all know what we're doing.
Okay, so we had a 7:15 meeting with the assessor.
Just before we go, the special town meeting warrant, then, I would take out Article Four and leave the other three.
Well, we'll come back to that because we didn't talk about what's in there.
Okay.
We have an appointment to talk about the seniors and veteran property tax work programs?
Yes. So... Do you have questions, or do you want me to just go into it?
You can just go into it, I'm little...
All right, so as you know, this is a, two programs that are local options that were provided by legislation from the state, and several communities have put into place the senior work-off program. And that, let's, we'll start there, that program allows anyone 60 years old or over to do jobs in the town for a reduction in their tax bill, up to $1,000. It's been increasing by the vote of the state over the years, and so it's up to $1,000 a person can earn. And the program is something that is put together under the Board of Selectmen, typically it's a town administrator, council on aging, or a volunteer in the town. The volunteer could be one of those people who are 60 years old or over, who would like to do that job and implement the program, and coordinate the jobs, coordinate the paperwork, the forms, the eligibility paperwork, the number of hours collected, and put together those reports. So there are administrative tasks that go along with having the program. So the, the differences in, some of them are the policy that the Board of Selectmen approve. One of them is, it's, you can have just any person 60 years or older, or you can have 60 and an income requirement. The, the programs that we currently have for exemptions are income-based, and they're age 65, and that was a local option that the town adopted several years ago, because the state exemption for elderly or income 41(c) is 70 years old, so we reduced that. We also reduced the income and assets requirement for single and married people. So that's one thing that you can choose to do under the policy that you approved for this, would be, it's either income-based or it's not. It is age 60, and the other is, yeah, what was the other one? Income-based, oh, owner-occupied, so if, does the person have, can the person be a tenant, or can, should the person be an owner-occupied resident for a minimum of five years? And the majority of the programs that I looked at, they used, the most of them used the same criteria that the state requires, which is an owner-occupied and a minimum of five years. They have to be in the property. So those are, those are pretty much...
How does it work if there's a tenant, because it, it, they just get paid if that is, I mean, because they don't pay...
Well, you can have, like, your, your mother's living in your house, and she's, you know, she's been there for years, and she just occupies a space, but the kids own the house, and so therefore, she is a resident of Berlin, but, and so that, the tax...
So this would be a family member, non-owner, is really sort of what we mean there?
Yes, yeah. And the other one is, there, there are a couple of communities, not many, that allow multiple people, so if the husband and wife are both 60 and they both wanna work these part-time jobs, they both can receive $1,000 apiece if they work up to the maximum, and that, therefore, that $2,000 would go to that property reduction.
You don't have to do $1,000, but you can go up to $1,000.
It's up to, that's the maximum.
And is there a cap on how much a town can, like, $50,000 is the total that the town could, no?
It's whatever you'd like to take out of overlay. The, the reduction of the tax money that is earned comes out of overlay, just like other exemptions.
Did you, ask questions?
Sure.
In terms of finding qualified individuals to do the work that's needed in town, have you heard any information about that?
I think first you have to find the jobs.
Right, so typically, what, what communities do when they decide they're gonna put together one of these programs is either you've identified somebody who has an interest in maybe coordinating the program, or you, you send out some kind of a, you know, an inquiry to the departments. The school is usually a major recipient of volunteers. They do a lot of volunteers with seniors right now, so, you know, the reading program, the filing, the paper copying, things like that can be done. There are other jobs probably over at the school that can, maybe a catheterium monitor.
I think there's one.
Keep the noise level down.
Put the earplugs in.
But departments usually will, will put together, you know, a response to an inquiry about how they, if they want to have a person come in, what, how would they utilize them, how many hours, what type of jobs, and then for the same thing is you, then you say, and there, I have several communities, all their paperwork, you know, their forms, their applications, their job interest sheets, so you try to pair somebody who has an interest to do one of these jobs with a job that you know that there is. And then for the same thing, it's like a, it's like a time sheet, so every time you go to that job, the person is responsible for having somebody sign off how many hours they did, they get those paperwork back at monthly, or quarterly, or however you wanna do that, and that report all gets calculated together and...
And they, they have to be paid minimum wage?
They have to be paid minimum wage.
So for $1,000, I just, it's like 125 hours of labor?
Maximum.
They're a track record on this, Diane, I mean, it's, I mean, the concept is good, and I tend to support that, but I'm trying to think of matching up people, you know, with jobs and volunteering, find somebody to do it. It doesn't seem realistic, frankly.
There's a lot of towns that do it.
Oh, there are a lot of towns?
Yeah, a lot of towns that do it.
You can, like she was saying, if you go online, you can find all their forms, right?
Right, Westboro is just sending me theirs by snail mail, they actually just voted theirs at town meeting, that actually studied it for two years off of other ones, so I have like Carver's and Auburn's, and Boyleston's Administrative Assistant actually coordinates theirs. Council on Aging is a pretty good resource for coordinating them. I haven't gone any further than like trying to ask somebody, but the, you know, we kind of floated this around years ago, when, when the plumber was here, we had some old notes in the folder, but it just kinda never went anywhere. But there has been more interest because there's a number of people who come in to get exemptions, and they don't qualify because they have too much income, and they're retired and they're, they love to do a job. So just tell them what job there is to do.
So what is the veterans' one, what is the qualification?
The veterans, let's see, we have... It's pretty much any...
Auto discharge?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, we've gotta turn here. Veteran, any person whose last discharge or release from wartime service was honorable conditions for not less than 180 days of active service, blah, 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 pretty much, any, any veteran, same thing, $1,000, minimum wage.
Now, do, can you put an income base on that one?
I would have to read that. I, I don't know if you can. I don't remember seeing an income one in anything related to veterans, but I'll double-check that. And, and again, I don't think I saw anything about owner, owner-occupied rules on that either for veterans, but I'll check that. And right now, just so you know, we currently have 23 veterans exemptions, 35 income-eligible senior exemptions that we already approve.
35 seniors?
Yeah. And any of those individuals who would like to participate in these programs can also participate, and on top of the exemptions they currently receive, they can receive an additional amount under this new program.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
The only other thing is, I, I don't remember that I checked the latest special town meeting warrant, but...
You had to have an implementation year?
Yeah.
So you, we put fiscal year 16 because you thought 15 would be a ramp-up year?
Yeah, I think you need to put 16 in there because fiscal year 15, we're already heading in, there's no time to, to do that, so it would be have to be fif, you know, 16, get the program requirements, get the jobs, kind of, I mean, and that's if people wanna vote it, unless you guys decide to do something different, we pass over it.
Does it have to be a fiscal year? Oh, well, you probably need it for a taxes...
Yeah, you have to know, you know, if you give your, if you give yourself a year to kind of pull everything together and start the jobs, and then fiscal year 16, we have the overlay, it'll be on the recap sheet, and the jobs would be there, and...
And also, there was a commitment of so many years?
Three years. Once you voted in, you have to keep it in for three years, and then you can go back to town meeting and, and remove it.
Is there a limit on how much you can take from overlay, I mean, how much is in overlay that you can use?
Whatever the taxpayer's burden will be.
I mean, we can, as a selectman, limit and say, I don't know, maybe we'll do $500 and we'll do $15,000 or something, and, right?
Right, a lot of towns in their first year set a maximum of $10,000, so there's maybe 10 or 20 people participating in the program for the $500 or $1,000, so whatever you wanna do, just to see if there's an interest.
Well, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the town warrant for May, so we should think about it, because the only thing we can do is pass over it now.
Yeah, so if it gets voted in, I have all the, the copies of all the communities, all the paperwork, all the policy stuff, which is pretty minor, the forums, some forums are a little more explicit than others, but it's really getting somebody to have an interest in wanting to coordinate it, and, you know, find out which jobs would be available, and...
So we have a year, so if we voted at May town meeting, it wouldn't start until July 1st of 2015? No, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Oh, did you want to stick around and talk about...
Yeah.
Sorry.
I put on for executive session, talking about where she's at with talking about the Son Edison Solar Agreement.
Well, I'm gonna be here all night, so if you have other business to do, I'll come back.
All right, we can come...
We'll come and get you then.
If you're finishing up, poke your head in, we won't keep you, okay? But we have a number of executive session things.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. I'm gonna just leave my paperwork right there.
All right.
Okay. For the special town meeting, we have on the warrant the Article One, which is to transfer some of the money from available...
to transfer some of money from available funds to the snow and salt wages overtime for FY fourteen. Currently, that is at fifty thousand fifteen dollars.
And we do hope it won't get higher.
Maybe not, no. Article Two is to transfer some of money from available funds to line item eighty-four, which is snow and salt expenses. Is that what I was looking at?
Yeah, that would be the last one there. No, same sheet. Go, yeah, go back two pages, go back three pages. Right, yeah.
So it's fifty thousand with more expense spending anticipated. Okay. Oh, all right.
I guess you stopped up.
Wages is at sixty thousand. Is that correct? Six thousand?
It's negative, it's negative.
It's negative, whatever. Supplies are negative at fifty. So we'll pay the snow and salt, the expenses and the, um, wages and we were paying an unpaid FY thirteen bill from Woodco Machinery for the Highway Department, which is how much?
A thousand eighty, see, a little tab up top that says Article Three. There, yep. Upper left-hand corner is a little white slip, June added it up, thousand eighty-three forty cents, I think.
Yep, one thousand eighty-three forty, which is for...
Parts for highway truck repairs.
Lever, handbrake, wiper shaft, antenna.
They found that there was an unpaid bill from...
Receiver, O-ring.
Two thousand and twelve.
And then Article Four, I guess we'll take out, which was the resolution. Sorry, Mary.
Oh, no.
So we just have the three articles?
So we just have the three articles. Well, if you want to, um...
Want me to do it now?
Yeah, because then we can...
Do you have to leave early? About tonight?
If you do that, then we can sign it and then you can get it in the pipeline. How are you?
Not too bad.
Doing late nights?
Yes, lots of them. And it will, it will continue through June because we hired somebody that we know and worked for us before, but because of their employment situation, they can't begin until the beginning of June. I mean, the good news is I know who I'm getting, but the bad news is I have to...
Wait for another two months.
Yeah, wait for another couple of months.
I had, um, you know John Phipps? Yeah, he's putting in a forty-acre solar farm in Rutland. Yeah. And so I asked him what inspections would entail and it isn't much. Didn't take much effort at all. He said that he basically described it to me as a lot of heavy piping and the conduits go in the ground, they trench those in. So they tried to get all the, much trenching done as possible and many things laid as possible, inspect it and almost fill it in the same day so they show up and look at it. Then after that, it's, um, hooking up, setting up the panels, clicking them together and inspecting them down there. And he thought it was two or three visits in a couple hours and he didn't see that much work. So I put a call into the, um, electrical inspector, but he hadn't got back to me, but it's just something that frankly sticks in my craw a little bit. So I'm going to look at it, see if I can get some good information on it. I, I think we're, you know, way overpaying for this. In fact, it might be a little problem having charged what we did for the permit, but I'll get, I'll get some accurate information on that. That's just twice the size, basically, of what's going in down there on River Road.
Want to just send them down to the table? Is that way you can help form us? Buster's on standby to post it.
Okay. All right, we have an application for a one-day liquor license for the Crystal Club Charity Open at Burling Country Club on Friday, August ninth, from eight AM to eight PM.
So moved.
Second?
Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have, we've already done the approval of the Insurance Advisory Committee before you got here.
Okay.
Um, we have a discussion regarding joint meeting with the Finance Committee on Monday, July fourteenth, twenty fourteen, for FY fourteen year end closeout.
June asked for it, so before everyone sets their vacation schedules, if they're available, we'll get a form of the two boards just to neatly close out the year for. Also, there's no meetings planned past May for this board, so...
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Something to think about as we can...
Yep. I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem.
I'm all set.
Every Monday, all through the summer?
No, we didn't see that.
We meet every other Monday in the summer.
Every other Monday, okay.
But...
We try.
For that Monday, yeah.
I put a, if you can, maybe not this week, but maybe think about it for next week about what Mondays you want to, what schedule. Is it first and third or is it second and fourth or like to mix it up or...
Ah, because she has the summer calendar in here.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can start from that one and...
Work backwards. We have approval of letter to Lighthouse Management regarding light kind and earthworks bylaws. So it's a letter to Mr. Jarvis saying that the Burling Board of Selectmen wished to inform you of Burling Town bylaws, um, twelve, earth removal and import and, um, light kind soil adopted May twelfth, one adopted by thirteen. The board is taking this action in response to being copied on a March twelfth, twenty fourteen email from your employee Gary Salter to Gary Muse.
Move to approve. Second?
Fall in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if you all saw the email, where the president of the company says that it's their belief that Gary Muse is a fake name for actually competitor of the company. So he's, that they're possibly just trying to mix it up.
Mm-hmm, that's fine. I'd still want the...
Let them be copied on the walls.
The document on record.
Yep.
Okay, we have minutes for approval, February third and February tenth.
Move to approve. Well, find out which, uh, who was here when, so we know.
Third and tenth, you were all here, did you go?
All here.
All here, that's okay. Move to approve. Second?
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Now, did you want to do the April third ones?
That's just last Thursday. Yeah, you can, there's just the two of you.
All right, so Thomas was absent, so, um, we have the minutes for April third.
I read them, uh, thank you for emailing them. I move that we approve them.
I second that. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see. A discussion regarding the shift of permit logging management to electrical and plumbing gas inspectors and implementation of draft time sheets for building electrical and plumbing gas. So we have a, uh, prototype for a time sheet.
Okay.
I would probably get rid of the gray so you could actually work on it.
Which has permit, site arrival, date, time, site departure and description of work performed.
Mm-hmm.
So they, they basically, maybe monthly because the two inspectors, they're paid monthly? Would you want to review that as part of your monthly report, maybe?
Yeah.
Get a printout of what?
Yeah.
Do you want that effective immediately?
Yeah.
I'm willing to make a motion to that effect. Second?
Fall in favor?
While we're on inspectors, I'd like to look into getting a, uh, permanent electrical inspector. Once we get, we haven't decided on a, um, job description, I know you were going to look into it.
I have all the descriptions printed out.
Okay.
I'll try to make a consensus one.
Composite or something, sure. Yeah, I really think we should move forward on that and get it advertised.
I agree.
Well, I will have something for the next meeting. We have a permit application for ground opening borings off edge of road filed by the Soil Exploration Corporation for River Road for design of river bridge, pedestrian bridge crossing at Barefoot Brook. Uh, do we have here? So it's a permit for a ground opening. It would be a two by three-inch case borings on edge of road for the design of the pedestrian bridge.
I move that we approve it. Second?
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next discussion item is, shall Mary be able to turn the camera on and off to record the Board of Selectmen meetings for the Cable Access Committee?
I think she's qualified and I move that we allow her to do it.
Second?
Do we have any discussion?
And do you, do you know where the button is?
She'll be where the button is, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure what her name is, but there's, someone's going to come in during Monday, set it up.
Okay.
And then I'd meet with her the next day. What's her name?
Brittany Blaney.
Brittany Blaney.
Our new station manager.
And she'll help break it down the next day and take the equipment back and lock it up.
So it stays here overnight?
It would stay overnight, but I'm usually locking the room overnight, so...
Yeah, we lock this room.
Right.
If we can get volunteer activity up, you know, putting remote access, remote controllable cameras in here is a possibility, but we need volunteers to be able to come in here and then run those. This, at least, you know, all it takes is very saying, "Go" and then "Stop" and then Brittany is available during the middle of the day to do the processing required to get it on cable the following evening.
Okay.
And snipping off clearly the beginning and the end of the meeting. And what's the running time? They have six hours to go? They can run a six-hour meeting if they're...
I think I can make it eleven if you have a problem with six hours.
You just need to warn me in advance, I could switch it to eleven-hour mode.
I think we can probably squeeze in the business in six.
Vaughn, do you have something that you want to?
No, I was just curious, like you guys are going to take a vote on, uh, that pipeline thing, the gas line thing, whether you're going to, I was just, I'm just sitting here as a spectator.
Did you get a person asking to go through Burling Auto Park?
Yeah, I was just wondering how you guys stood around, that's all.
We voted no.
Yeah, we voted not to allow them at this point to have access to the conservation land to do that.
And they can just go ahead and get access anyway for act...
Well, I think they have to, my understanding is they have to apply to the state for a permit and then once they get the permit, they can ask you and negotiate like an easement with you if they decide. And if you won't negotiate with them, then they can just take it.
Joel actually gave a full legal opinion late September. I just forwarded it to you guys before the meeting. It's at the very beginning of the packet.
I didn't read it, I'll take a look at it.
It's just the same.
So now you can say no and they can't do anything.
Okay.
Actually, Vaughn, it, uh, it's, I think it's going to prove to be quite a big issue because the very issue of fracking in Western New York is a big environmental issue and there are some big guns coming out with all kinds of opposition to it, so I think it's going to blossom into quite a, quite a battle, so I wouldn't give up on it. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be confident that they can come charging through town.
Right, might rather not have to deal with it.
Yeah. So they're going to come down Baker and then cut down across Randall and go through...
Yeah, across Coburn and then across the...
Where were they going to go in it? Did they say they'd come in where you are?
Well, they're going to come through my personal lot and then through a corner of the junkyard.
So that part.
At least town on that map, see the very southwest corner of the town, there's a little red stick bin that I put there today. It crosses down through into North Road right at that point, so from there it goes up through our conservation land, the green, and then cuts across a little to the right up through the Clark piece, which is then go up through you, I guess, Burling Auto Parks and then on a, through the Forty Caves area and off that way.
No.
I was surprised you mentioned Forty Caves though, because that's the other side of Lancaster Road and I'm off of Peach Hill, so I don't know how the Forty Caves thing comes into it.
Unless they're looking at multiple routes.
Kind of all their bases.
Very poor maps they gave us, Marshall gave.
All I've got, it's just this blue line and who knows where it's going. Right, now, well, that's good, I'm glad you get it. They said no.
Okay, we got a, um, chapter ninety letter from the state telling us that we're going to get a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars in local transport aid, transportation aid funding, which is paving money. We got a letter from Service Employees International Union to the Director of Procurement offering us, I don't know.
I think they just, they blanket of the state, they're opposed to a certain contractor that does work at airports, so I think they just copied everybody.
Okay, we care. We got something from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Department of Telecommunications and Cable about notice of public hearing on cable television rates.
Uh, actually, it's basic tier service programming for charter communications.
November first, twenty thirteen, charter filed with the Department of Telecommunications. You can, yes, to raise the rates, to investigate their proposed basic service tier programming, equipment and installation rates, May twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, ten AM at the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. Are you going to...
Cable advisory.
I copied them.
We have a copy of the Beacon. We have a letter from the DEP announcing the twenty-fourteen Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant. It's authorized under the Green Communities, provides grants to municipalities, regional governments for recycling, composting, reuse and waste reduction.
I copied the board of health on that.
Right, good.
We got something from FEMA.
Larry got his own letter on that and I copied the assessors.
There was an article in the Beacon on this.
So this is their...
Flood insurance map.
Flood insurance map.
Taking effect July.
Look like we have a choice in participating in that. We have something from the Town Treasurer regarding comparison re-offering yield reports, which didn't print out very well. It's just telling you about what bonds are bidding out for. We have something from Sawyer Hill Forty-B Release. Dear Selectmen, unfortunately, the DHCD is not proving to be terribly helpful in this process. Attempts to set up a phone conference with them were not successful, they have not responded, nor have they responded to the letter that we sent, we being us. We have been advised by our Forty-B consultants... We have been advised by our Forty-B consultants that we will most likely need to revise the comprehensive permit in order to release these homes, which is in line with the concerns the DHCD had expressed about when we asked for the phone conference, that a release would be in violation of the comprehensive permit. I was hoping that DHCD would accept your letter. However, we do not seem to be blessed with an easy solution. We greatly appreciate any advice you might have on how we might best proceed.
Well, the comprehensive is going in for a modification to the ZBA.
So is that what they're doing, or do we need to tell them they need to go to the ZBA and get the comprehensive permit?
If they don't know that, then I think we, we should, we should tell them. I mean, that, that, that could be a fairly administrative step. They're correct that they have a comprehensive permit right now that requires a certain number of affordable housing, and that needs to be amended. But I think that's just going to, uh, CBA and asking for an amendment of the comprehensive permit.
So can you reply to that?
To the ZBA to make an application?
Yeah. Uh, we have something from the Fire Chief about forty-one home fatalities from March thirtieth through April fifth. We have something from.
Start it from where?
From the Fire Chief. Forty-one home fatalities in US News Media reports forty-one home fatalities, April thirtieth through, March thirtieth through April fifth.
Throughout the country, or?
Yeah. Yeah.
I was thinking of visiting Berlin. Okay.
We have the spreadsheet rescue, spreadsheet, um, for rescue for the month of March. And we have the number of building permits for the month of March. We had sixty-one thousand in permit fees and ten million in valuation. Eight of that coming from the solar.
Did you see that, um, section in the Globe, uh, Thursday, have the, um, bar graph of comparing towns in Berlin? You must have seen it. Had the least amount of tax revenue from the residential sector of all the towns we were compared to.
I didn't see. I only get the Globe on Sunday. Well, that's good.
I'll clip it and bring it in.
Yeah, I mean, that shows a diverse tax base.
Right, well, tax base is good, plus you voted last year, or whatever it was when you voted to split the tax rate.
Right, right.
So that was important.
That's right. No, we have tried to pay some attention to residential, really, yes.
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
Yeah.
That was the point of having commercial, wasn't it? Okay, so do we have anything else that is not for executive session?
Just, um, two things that I think are just, three things. Someone came in today from Worcester Sand and Gravel.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm gonna ask them to do a permit, uh, earthwork permit. They wanna bring in fifteen thousand yards of virgin dirt from the former digital equipment facility off Simranow Way, off the highway, and put it down at their pit off of River Road. So you go forty-five to two ninety to River Road.
Is this for purposes of closing out their pit and adjusting the grade, or is this?
No, just to put it there.
Store?
Well, that's a good question. I don't, no, I didn't ask them that straight up.
Because they do have a commitment to grade it, to grade it.
Right.
And, um, and I know that's been pending for quite some time, so we should find out. Uh, uh, well, obviously, when they do the application, they'll, they'll provide that information.
Yeah, I think he thinks by giving me this letter, that was it, so I will get in touch with him and say.
Oh, yeah.
No.
I couldn't walk him through it today, I didn't have time.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll talk to him about it. And then another thing is, um, last August, before I got hired, you, uh, approved implementation of the Active Street Certification Program. So Diane says there's a state clickoff that we have to do. I'm just gonna do it based on your minute. You already voted to support that idea. And then the other thing is, there's a woman on West Street who wants to have, um, speed limit lowered in front of her house. She says her and her neighbors agree. I think it's Flat Penny-ish area. So the chief said that, police chief said that he'd like to talk to you about it next week.
Okay.
But I've warned her that sometimes the state studies it and says it's actually too low and could go up.
That's right.
So.
They tried to get the, um, speed limit lowered in front of Tejant, and the state wouldn't do it.
No, we tried.
It's fifty miles an hour.
It's fifty miles an hour. You got kids pulling it out and they would not.
No, we tried to lower it close to ten years ago now on, um, Pleasant Street and South Street. And, uh, they wouldn't allow a reduction on those two streets. So, but, I mean, we, doesn't mean we shouldn't go through the motions. This is what we can do.
So that'll be next week, okay? And also next week, it'll be buttoning down the annual town meeting warrant for me to give it to Barry, to put in the town report, and then.
We have a final, we, you've sent us a copy of it?
Oh, the annual, well, now we've talked about fiscal year sixteen implementation for the work-off programs. Town Council gave me some draft pilot language for solar. Maybe you'd like to take a look at it?
Okay.
And then, um.
Do I have it already, or?
No, he just gave it the other day. And there was another attorney from Copman Page who was gonna give some comments about the chief's pawn shop bylaw. So, but I haven't heard back from them. That was supposed to be.
Well, it seems to work when you say, "I have a deadline."
I know, I know. So I will, because I think that attorney will get back to me quickly.
Okay.
And that's really it. It's pretty much done.
All right.
All right. Well, then, we have a need, do we have a need for executive session?
Well, you do definitely on Maplewood.
And the pilot.
And I have an update on, um, I'd like to discuss for five or ten minutes at least, the, uh, police union negotiations as well, so.
Is the annual report gonna be available online?
Don't know.
Because, I mean, people love to get it a little bit earlier than, you know.
At town meeting.
Well, four days beforehand, yeah.
Yeah, put the warrant on the line anyway.
Yeah, we can put the town warrant on.
Town warrant on.
Well, I mean, but it has to go out to the printer, so you obviously have the final product available a week or so before you're mailing it.
This office doesn't do it.
Okay, well, I just, just a thought.
Yes, the moderator that puts that together. And you, you might be surprised that the, the length of. You might be surprised the length of time, this, the gap between, you know, things being ready and going out.
Okay, just a thought, you know, because it's always.
And we can certainly put the, uh, the warrant on quite a while ahead of time. When it goes to Barry.
Like next week?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to, should I continue this or close this one and open the executive? Is there any reason?
You enter executive, you don't close.
Well, no, I mean, we have, basically have to say, and we don't intend to go back into open session. But we, we've gone through it. I don't think we have any other open session items.
No.
So therefore, I would move that we go into executive session for, uh, the purposes of litigation strategy with respect to, um, Johnston v. Town in Berlin, and with respect to the review of the police union negotiations.
And Brennan versus the Town of Berlin.
Oh, I didn't know, but is there actually something on that, too?
Well, the update.
Okay.
And the pilot.
And the pilot. I would second that.
All right, you need to do a roll call?
And or I?
Boom and I?
Bickford I.